Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Aging. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go to the back of the room to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's, I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Crystal Hudson, Chair of the Committee on Aging. My pronouns are she/her, and I'd like to welcome you all to today's oversight hearing on older adult kinship caregiving resources and introduction number 1184, which would establish a program to support older adults providing kinship care within the Department for the Aging or NYC Aging. We are joined here by Councilmembers Salam and Shulman. Across the United States, one in 11 children will live in kinship care at some point during childhood, a figure that rises to one in five for Black children. In New York State, there are an estimated 179,000 kinship caregivers, 131,000 of whom are older adults. As of mid-2024, more than 7,700 New York City children were placed in foster care with over 3,100 living in the home of an approved relative. These caregivers, the majority of whom are older adults, step into a crucial role, often due to circumstances such as parental death, abuse, incarceration, or mental health issues. According to NYC Aging, many older adult caregivers in NYC provide at least 30 hours of care each week and may work additional jobs to provide for non-biological children in kinship care. Studies consistently show that children in kinship care experience better behavioral and mental health outcomes than those placed in foster care with non-relatives. They benefit from maintaining familial relationships, preserving their cultural identity, and having a stronger bridge into adulthood, all of which can result in significantly better life outcomes. And for older adults, raising grandchildren or other young relatives can bring feelings of satisfaction, pride, and significance. Yet for the older adults who do sit up to provide this care, often unexpectedly, there can be significant financial, legal, and social challenges. Many live on fixed incomes, must navigate complex guardianship or custody processes, and often juggle healthcare needs of their own while caring for a child. While NYC Aging's Grandparent Resource Center, or GRC, once offered a centralized source of support for these caregivers, its closure has left older adults struggling to find the same level of specialized assistance at the local level. The GRC services, including workshops, case management, and referrals, were vital for navigating the complex legal and financial landscape of kinship care. Now these services are decentralized and spread across multiple agencies and community-based organizations, which has led to confusion and fragmentation for caregivers who once relied on GRC staff expertise. Both my office and the committee have heard from caregivers and advocates that this shift has led to continued gaps in both services and support, particularly in terms of outreach and communication with those most in need. As we convene today, we will examine whether older adult kinship caregivers are truly being served under this decentralized model and how best to fill any gaps that may exist. We will also discuss intro number 1184, sponsored by myself, which would require NYC Aging to create a kinship care program that would support older adults who provide full-time care for someone who is not their biological child. At a minimum, the program would provide case assistance and workshops on issues related to kinship caregiving, and it would require NYC Aging to provide written materials about the kinship care program to older adult centers and to provide in-person information sessions at OACs. This hearing is an opportunity to gather insight, share lived experiences, and consider actionable steps to strengthen the city's support for older kinship caregivers and the children they are raising. We should do all we can to support kinship families. By supporting them, we are building happier, healthier, and more cohesive communities. Thank you to the representatives from the administration who will be testifying today. I also want to thank my colleagues on the Committee on Aging, as well as Councilmembers Lee, who's also joined us. I would also like to thank my staff, Andrew Wright and Aging Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, and Samuel Hamid. I'll now turn it over to the committee council to administer the oath to the administration.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. Now, in accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the mayoral administration. If you could both please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmembers' questions? Commissioner? Deputy Commissioner? You may proceed.
Is it I? Okay, now, great. So, good afternoon. I'm not sure if I like afternoon hearings or morning hearings more. Well, do I like hearings? But anyway. Good afternoon, Chair Hudson and members of the City Council Committee on Aging. As you know, I'm Lorraine Colte Vasquez, Commissioner of the New York City Department for the Aging, as we now call it NYC Aging. I appreciate, totally appreciate, the opportunity to testify before you today regarding resources for older adult kinship caregivers and the New York City Department for the Aging's caregiving program overall. It is something that is very dear and very personal to me. Kinship caregivers play a vital role in supporting New York City families and, like older adults, across the Five Boroughs. And it's something that you said, Madam Chair. They are, it is vitalizing and really enriching experience, although it is a financial drain, but I'll get to that later on. And like older adults across the five cities, I mean, the five boroughs, they pour into the communities where they live by growing with young people into vital members of society. And this is to be expected as the share of older New Yorkers continues to grow as a proportion of the population. Because of the direct connection this form of caregiving has with New Yorkers under the age of 18, I am pleased to be joined today by my colleagues from the Administration for Children's Services, I think it's called New York City Children now, I think, who is also available to share information about the support that ACS provides to caregivers, including kinship caregivers. As I have said time and again, caregiving is a vital component of NYC's Aging Care Plan and is fundamental to shaping and building an age-inclusive city. Our city is home to over 1 million unpaid caregivers who serve a range of New Yorkers, from fellow older adults to those with disability, and of course, New Yorkers under the age of 18. I know this experience firsthand, as I know you know this experience firsthand, Madam Chair, and have therefore said before, not only am I the commissioner, I'm also a client. As I've watched my mother's aging experience in my role as commissioner, I've learned the challenges in navigating the systems, even as the executive head of the largest area agency on aging. That can only be maximized when experienced by a person who is not familiar with aging resources. Families and caregivers ask, "Where do I begin?" And they are frequently unaware of how to find help through city services. It is incumbent on New York City Aging to ensure that they have the resources they need and the information they need to address their loved one situation. I look to the city council's partnership as we address the expanding number of older adults in New York City navigate disjointed services, which our caregiver program works to make clear for caregivers. This also applies to the kinship caregiver, who are providing care to younger members of their family, including their grandchildren or their grandchildren. And we are committed to connecting these older adults to the best possible services and resources and supports that they need. The actions surrounding caregiving for another person, from cooking, cleaning, providing support in the home, errands, bathing, and other aspects of daily living, add stress to an individual's life in addition to their professional or outside responsibilities or their family responsibilities, and make supporting these New Yorkers a priority for New York City Aging. We know that the share of older adults in New York City will continue to grow in the coming decades, and so will the number of those caring for others, including minors and young people. NYC Aging's caregiving program provides community-based support, such as information and referral, long-term care planning, counseling and support, as well as respite care and financial assistance for some types of assisted devices. I am extremely proud of the work that the caregiver program at NYC Aging does for older adults and their family and loved ones, but also recognize that our work grows in proportion to the number of older adults in the city. This is only possible because a network of community service providers are the ones that actually deliver the service. In response to Local Law 97 of 2016, NYC Aging conducted a survey in partnership with ACS and the Mayor's Office of People with Disability, of unpaid and informal family caregivers, in order to create a comprehensive plan to address their needs. This was the first survey of its kind in New York City to explore the needs of unpaid caregiver rather than those of the professional paid home care worker. The target population for this survey were caregivers for an individual 60 years or older, including those with Alzheimer's or related dementia. Persons caring for individuals with disability between the ages of 18 and 59, kinship caregivers, grandparents, or older relatives caring for children under the age of 18. The results of this survey had helped NYC Aging develop innovations within the caregiving program based on three key findings: the overarching need for respite care, the caregivers' need for additional information and resources, and transportation resources as part of their caregiving responsibility. Contracted caregiver providers serve older adults and their caregivers through vital in-person services, such as support groups, training, connections, to many services available to them as part of their caregiving responsibility. We help them with techniques and best practices, access to respite care, and other resources to alleviate the stress of caregiving. Regardless of the age of the caregiver, a caregiver will attend to the daily needs of another person, whether that is physical, emotional, or financial support for a family member, partner, or close friend. More than 5,000 New Yorkers are served annually by our caregiving program through the network of 12 community-based service providers. Older adults caring for children or minors fall into a specific demographic served by NYC Aging. During the 2017 unpaid caregiver survey, NYC Aging learned key points about this group, which have defined the way we connect them to services and resources. Overall, caregivers are predominantly women. More than half were Black, non-Hispanic older adults, and more than 60 were over the age of 65. While all caregivers generally spend time providing personal care to the care recipient, because of the nature of caregiving for minors, at the time of the survey, 64% of older adult kinship caregivers report as spending more than 40 hours per week of personal care. This demographic needed assistance in assessing information and services available to assist them in obtaining benefits and financial services, services to offer respite care, and legal services. In the years since this survey and the subsequent progress reports and updates we have provided the council, NYC Aging has refined and developed a growing caregiving program to serve older adults. In New York State, as our chair indicated, one in 11 children live in a kinship caregiving home where they are living with a relative who is not their parent. NYC Aging caregivers offers a range of services for the older relatives providing care for the child under the age of 18. Caregivers often provide workshops that address the needs of kinship caregivers in addition to overall caregiving needs and counseling based on the caregiver and the care recipient's needs. The respite care for short-term relief as caregivers navigate their duties and responsibilities is another service. This is a vital component of the community care plan, which I understand we're going to have Community Care 201 coming out soon. And adds to the financial benefits of supporting older New Yorkers who ensure that they can age in place within the community that they serve. Providing benefits and services for kinship caregivers keeps families within their neighborhoods and communities while supporting the younger person who is experiencing changes within their family life. This touches other areas of our work as well, such as a test program, which is the Tendency Eviction Support Service Program, where older adults who are caring for minors find themselves at threat of eviction and must be connected to a range of services provided through community care. Because of this direct connection between kinship caregiver services and the community care plan, as well as our ongoing need to be efficient and effective as possible in our efforts to ensure high-quality services, New York City Agency expanded kinship care services previously provided by the now-closed Grandparent Resource Center and formally enveloped them, incorporated them, into our caregiving programs. As with all our programs and services, NYC Aging continues to evolve and refine what we provide for kinship caregivers through enhanced victim and crime prevention services in our Elder Justice Contract, a broader citywide network of older adult center programs, and leveraging the breadth of the NYC Cabinet for older New Yorkers which are within our partners. We have found that expanding these services met the needs of older adults through our existing resources and better serve kinship caregiver participants of the former GRC. Kinship caregivers can access the same services and connections to programming they receive from the standalone GRC unit within the current caregiving programs, OAC, elder justice providers, and connections to resources at partner agencies. I understand that today's hearing also is to discuss the introduction of 1184, which would create a kinship care program with NYC Aging to support older adults providing full-time care for minors who are not their biological child. As I said, regarding the expansion of NYC caregiving programs, our contracted providers are ready to serve older adults who are kinship caregivers and provide guidance and support and connections to vital services that meets the needs of these demographics of caregivers. We thank the council for your interest and look forward to continuing discussion on this piece of legislation. As always, because of the direct connection between caregiving programs and community care, we remain focused on ensuring that all our programs and services best support older adults through our existing network of community-based resources. Kinship caregiving has always been a key component of the community care plan, and we're so excited to understand how planning for the future continues to be part of our work in aging services at NYC Aging. This is shaping up to be a big year for our agency as we celebrate 50 years since our founding. We look forward to planning a slate of events, celebrations, and initiative, and also highlight the work that we've done, our programs and services, including caregiver supports, as well as the contracted service providers who do so much of this amazing work on behalf of older adults. This coming November, we will celebrate National Family Caregiving Month, and I hope we can work with each one of you to make sure that we have services available and that we continue these incredible services throughout the Five Boroughs. As always, I appreciate the council's advocacy and deep commitment to supporting older adults and these programs. I've been fortunate to have worked with two exceptional Aging Committee chairs. Thank you again for this opportunity to discuss caregiving needs for older adults and the kinship caregiving options that exist for older adults in NYC Aging. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Juang. Okay. Can you share when the Grandparent Resource Center officially closed?
What was the year? July 2023.
Okay, thank you. And what was the transition plan for former GRC clients? And how did NYC Aging communicate this transition to caregivers who relied on GRC services?
I'm going to give you a little more background for that.
Okay.
So, when?
We always appreciate more background.
Yeah. So, when we were looking at this program, we had six staff people working in the GRC program at the time of its closure. And they fell under these titles called Community Associate, Capacity Building, and Learning Coordinator, and Community Advocate. And what we had found was, when we were looking at that, that at that time, there was a very low utilization rate. I know I'm going ahead and answering some of your other questions. So, but there was a low utilization rate. And what we did was, we couldn't understand the why, right? Given the fact that it was a very broad geographic area, and yet we had low utilization. So, what we looked at in 23 provided information and assistance to 295 clients. And then when we did intake, we learned that 52 of those were care receivers associated with these clients.
Sorry, can you just repeat that? 295 participants?
Received, information and referral, all right? And then we learned through intake that 52 were known care associated with these clients, right? And it was that kind of level of, then that made us inquire more and start collecting more data. So, we kept looking at who were actual care recipients and caregivers, who was kinship caring. The last six months of the program that we identified, there were 94 participants, seven of which were identified as caregiver. It was an incredible amount of resources for that minimal impact. And we started looking at how best to have greater impact and also provide services. So, what we did was, we took all of the clients, all of the clients received calls, personal calls, and then we started setting up services and cross-trained people in the caregiving program to be trained to start giving services for kinship care also. We then took all of the clients and then referred them to our existing caregiving programs with a focus on kinship care.
Got it. And then, how did you measure utilization? You mentioned there was low utilization. How did you measure utilization?
We measure utilization by not only the number of concrete services they received, whether it was information, referral, home attendant services, or whatever the services were. But we also looked at, which was key to this, which is what was, I think, the aha moment for us, was we were giving services but to people who were not kinship caregivers.
Okay, but you're saying that the kinship caregivers were receiving those services as well?
Kinship caregivers were receiving services. But what we noticed was the number of people who were registered as receiving services, only a small portion of those, let me look at the number, a seven were actually identified as kinship caregivers.
Okay.
So, people were receiving services, they were just not as the program was designed.
Right. I guess, how would they have been included in that program if they hadn't been kinship caregivers?
I think that's, those are some of the same questions we had. You know, I'm sure that, what was the intake process? What was the follow-up process? There's, you know, that, there were a lot of questions that were not answered at that time.
Who did intake?
Who did intake? Say that again? I'm sorry. This was all designed before I got here. So, this was all part of the MAP program. And define what MAP is? Can you define what the MAP program was? Okay. So, this was all part of the Mayor's Action Plan, and that was how the geographic areas were determined. And there were large geographic areas. And then you needed to discern from all of those people, I think there was, sometimes there were upwards of 1,000 people in the area?
Yes.
Yeah. And from there, you had to then discern who were kinship caring and who were regular recipients. One of the things we found, that services were provided, but the number that were kinship caregivers was very, very low.
Understood. Okay, so, since the GRC's closure, how has NYC Aging ensured that kinship care resources for older adults once housed at the GRC are of similar quality as well as accessible throughout the Five Boroughs?
Can you repeat that for me? I'm just looking for the proper response for you.
Sure. Since GRC's closure, how have you ensured that kinship care resources for older adults are of similar quality as well as accessible throughout the Five Boroughs? So, you mentioned that people are still receiving the services.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, how are you determining whether or not the services are of the same quality that they were under the GRC? And are they accessible across the Five Boroughs?
The kinship care services are provided as part of our caregiving program. The same way we have confidence, and it's the same provider is trained to provide and support kinship caregivers. We have a great deal of confidence in the quality of the services of our caregiving providers.
Thank you.
And it's something that's constantly monitored.
Okay. Can you describe the ways in which NYC Aging informs older adults about existing kinship care resources, especially those who are not digitally connected?
As I've testified in other hearings, everyone in the Aging Network, in the nonprofit Aging Network, it's part of a larger, part of a larger network of services. Everyone is funded to do an outreach and education plan, and everyone is then connected to all of our services. And we also have Aging Connect.
How many sources do you have?
How many?
Referral sources?
We have 12 agencies, all right? There is two per borough, except Staten Island, there's only one. And then we have three citywide agencies, one that have target populations, one for LGBTQ, AI, and then there is another one for Asian-American Pacific Islander. And then there is another one focusing on the people with disabilities, particularly visually impaired.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, can you describe the ways in which NYC Aging coordinates with other city agencies to promote kinship care resources for older adult caregivers?
Well, even prior to the cabinet, we had a very strong relationship with the Agency for Children's Services. And then as a result, you know, we even strengthened that. But we've always had a strong relationship with ACS.
Great, and I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Banks. Can you, how does NYC Aging ensure kinship care resources are accessible to the diverse linguistic and cultural backgrounds of older New Yorkers?
As, I don't know where these questions are. As with all of our services, it's a requirement that you provide services in the language of the population that you serve. I believe that we have a threshold of anywhere between 15 and 20%.
I'm sorry, 15 and 20%?
Of the population. If the population you're serving is over 15 and 20% of a particular language, cultural, or religious need, then the requirements, you're required to address those.
And then, in terms of legal assistance, legal barriers such as guardianship, custody, and adoption can be particularly complex for older caregivers. What legal aid or pro bono services are currently available to help them navigate these processes?
We have, we do not provide services directly other than the legal services that we have through our, is it five, legal programs?
Okay, but are you?
And are focused on?
Are you connecting folks directly to those programs?
If that is an issue that comes up, it's also part of the referral service.
Okay.
That and any other legal services that they would need. I mean, that's part of the connectivity.
Older adult caregivers often live on fixed incomes, as we know. What steps does the city take to simplify access to financial supports like TANF, SNAP, and KinGAP for older caregivers?
Do you want to take that?
I can answer for, not for TANF and SNAP, but I can answer for KinGAP and kinship subsidy through foster care.
Sure.
So, for children who've been found to be abused or neglected and come into foster care, which requires family court oversight and review... care, which requires family court oversight and review, we prioritize placing children with kin. At this time, 45% of the children in foster care, so about 2,800 out of 6,500, are living with kin, which we define very broadly to include grandparents, aunts, uncles, you know, relatives, but also like a close family friend, a godparent, we'd consider kin. And just to put it in the sense of this hearing, currently, we have 2,082 foster parents in the system, and 620 of them are over age 60.
620?
But for all kinship foster parents, they would get a kinship foster care subsidy that's based on, there's several different rates, based on the age of the child and the needs of the child. There's a basic rate, and then, special and exceptional rate. When children are in foster care, our goal for almost all children is to reunify them with their families and to send them back home. And so, a lot of the work we do is about providing their parents and the children and the foster parents, the services and support so kids can go home. And so, most children in foster care return home. But each year, roughly 350 children have finalized kinship guardianship. It changes by the year, and it goes down each year because fewer children are in foster care and more children return home. But for kids who are going to live permanently with their relative, we would connect them to the Kinship Guardianship Assistance Program, which is similar to adoption subsidy, in that the relative would get guardianship, and they would continue to get the subsidy, which is usually equivalent to what they were getting as a foster care subsidy.
And of the, I'd like to acknowledge that we've also been joined by Councilmember Millie. Of the 620 folks over age 60, have they been connected to the caregiving program through NYC Aging?
So, I would have to check specifically, but I can say a couple of things. One is that the, a child could be with more than one foster parent, so there could be someone over 60 and someone under 60 in the same household. And there obviously can be multiple children in each household. But we do, for those, any child in foster care, we're working really closely with their foster parents. And the foster care provider provides them with an intensive training that includes how to work with young people who face trauma, and sort of individualized services for that family, whether it's therapy or referrals, all different referrals. So in some ways, those families have a suite of services that they're getting through their foster care agency. And so, I'm not sure if they've been connected, but I can check on whether or not they've been connected. I'm not sure if we would track that.
Okay, so there isn't like a formal relationship between the foster care system necessarily, or at least specifically for people over age 60 that are in the system with NYC Aging or the caregiving?
Right, it's not formal. I do know that our staff actually, within the last couple of months, recently did a training where our staff trained DIFTA and vice versa, sorry, aging and vice versa, to make sure that our staff were aware of the services they offer. Because in some ways, the families we work with who might need those services are on the preventive side of our continuum, where we're connecting all caregivers who are in need with free services and supports. And so, they might benefit from a specialized service like that too.
Was that training in anticipation of this hearing?
No, actually.
Okay, I was just joking.
It predates that by a couple of months.
Okay. Caring for children can be emotionally and physically exhausting for older adults. What mental health and wellness resources are available to older kinship caregivers? I guess either or both can answer.
I mean, so on our side, foster care agencies, on the foster care side, foster care agencies are working with the families to make sure they have the services they need. All children in.
That's for all families regardless of the age of the.
Correct.
Right.
And all of the children in foster care are eligible for Medicaid, so they usually get their mental health services that way. On the prevention side, we offer, in every community, sort of a continuum of services based, that could be referrals for concrete goods, up to evidence-based therapy like MST and FFT. And that would be available to any caretaker, regardless of whether they're a parent, a grandparent. And they could come to us for services, and we offer for free regardless of immigration status, in every community in the city, those types of supports, which include mental health supports.
Great. Anything to add?
On our side, because it's part of a network of services, right? And we have the geriatric mental health programs, and we have hub programs in each one of the older adult centers. Should they need services, and should that be something that the caregiver program provide, caregiver service provider identifies, then that's where they would be referred.
Okay, great. I want to move into some data questions, if I may. At the City Council's Committee on Aging Fiscal 2025 Preliminary Budget Hearing on March 8, 2024, NYC Aging testified that the Grandparent Resource Center was closed due to low utilization rates, as we've discussed. How many staff were in the GRC at the time of its closure? Did you say it was six?
Six.
And what were their titles?
They were, fell into the category of Community Associate, Capacity Building and Learning Coordinator, and Community Advocate.
Okay. And for the staff that worked directly with clients, do you know what their caseloads were like?
I can get that for you, I don't remember.
Okay.
I don't have that.
And then, can you share any statistics on the number of clients served and the types of services utilized prior to its closure? I know you went into a little bit of that earlier, but.
Yeah. The, and let me look at, in FY '23, provided 295 units of information and referral. And as I said earlier, 52 were known care receivers. In '22, provided information to 300 clients. And then, we learned through the intake that there were 70, only 77 were caregivers associated with that. And then, in the last six months, as I said earlier, there were 94 participants, seven were identified caregivers.
Can you just clarify, of the folks, like, so, for example, the last six months, you're saying 94 folks, but only seven were identified as being part of, is that because that is like an affirmative number? Meaning, could there have been other people who were also receiving the services but that just weren't caught? Or was that like an explicit question that was asked?
It was to be identified as a caregiver. That's the data we have on hand, right, for that period.
So is it self, self-identified as a caregiver?
Yes.
Okay. As a kinship caregiver or just a caregiver?
Identified as a caregiver.
Kinship.
Kinship.
Okay.
Reliquish.
Do you have the utilization rates at the GRC over the last 10 years of its existence, by chance?
I don't.
Can you maybe follow up with that?
We could follow up with that. And that being said, and not knowing exactly how the data was collected, it might be data collected, data sources and data, different than what we sort of call something now.
Okay.
Right, so it's been 10 years.
Understood. What kind of advertising and outreach did NYC Aging engage in in order to attract potential clients and address the alleged dip in utilization rates? Were you ever trying to get the numbers up?
As with all of our services, you know, we're always have, each one of our local programs has a responsibility for outreach and education. So the goal is not only for kinship care, but for everything, so that people can utilize programs and services at a higher rate. That is an issue that we are constantly addressing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any data collection systems in place?
And I just got some information. In FY '21 and FY '22, we had a bus shelter campaign just for foster grandparents, I mean, for Grandparent Resource Center.
Okay, FY '21 and FY '22, okay, thank you.
Now that I think.
Are there any data collection systems in place to track the number of older adult kinship caregivers, their needs and outcomes under the decentralized model?
I have some data here. And if not, I'll get back to you with that. For FY '24, 5,485 individuals throughout the five boroughs received caregiving services. Do you want me to keep giving you by year?
Yeah, if you have it.
Yeah, I do.
That was FY '24, right?
Right. FY '23, it was 5,215, and FY '22 was 5,349.
In the fiscal 2019 adopted budget for NYC Aging, we see budget lines that show the Grandparent Resource Center was budgeted at $341,357 for four positions. This remained the same through fiscal 2022. Can NYC Aging confirm what the full budget was for the Grandparent Resource Center when it was in operation and what the funding covered?
I can get that for you, right? But I know that at the end, we had six staff people.
With that same budget? Six staff people for the same $341,357?
I can confirm the dollar mine, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. What did, what was the overall breakdown of personnel services?
I'm sorry, Chair, I do have that information.
Okay.
I believe, I believe so.
The full budget for the Grandparent Resource Center?
The full budget for the Grandparent Resource Center was, for FY '23, right, was $346,901, right? And Personnel Services funded $122,369. Total was $5,000, $500,025, $944.
Sorry, FY '25, that number was?
'23.
No, FY '23, you said 346,901. Personnel Services, 122,369?
Personnel Services for FY '23 were budgeted $339,862. We actually expended $346,901. The rest was in OTPS.
That was Personnel Services, right? Not OTPS?
The original number, the 338, 862 was for Personnel Services.
Personnel Services, okay.
And we actually over-expended that year.
What was the, okay, you gave us that. What happened to the staff when the program ended? The six staff?
The staff, the Grandparent Resource staff were assigned to other programs within the agency.
And can you confirm the funding sources?
Can I?
Confirm the funding sources?
For those staff?
Yeah, for the, for the budget for Grandparent Resource Center.
Other than what I just gave you for?
Not the numbers, but the sources. Was it city tax levy dollars, was it?
Ah, I will have to get back to you on that.
Currently, NYC Aging offers caregiving support services to caregivers who are taking care of older adults, to older adult caregivers who are caring for youth. This program is operated by contracted community-based providers. Does this program serve the same population that was served by the previous DIFTA kinship program and Grandparent Resource Center?
By the same population, it would, because it's neighborhood-based, I would assume that it is the same population. I cannot attest to the fact that it's the same individuals.
You said you cannot attest to that?
Cannot attest to the fact that it might be the same individuals.
Okay.
By the way, I was just given information that it's all CTL funding.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you. Does DIFTA currently utilize its contracted provider network to provide services to kinship caregivers? And how many providers provide this service?
The same, as I said, it was absorbed into the caregiving program.
So those 12 that you mentioned?
The 12, right.
Can you share the fiscal 2025 budget for the contracts associated with these services? And do you know if it's baselined?
I'm gonna have to get back to you on the '25, all right?
Okay.
Excuse me.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
I have, depending on which, sorry.
Just turn off your microphone.
Yes, I'm sorry, I will have to call you back.
I know, it's okay, I know. Thank you.
I am a client.
What was that?
I said, "I am a client."
You are a client, I know, I know. How many older adult caregivers were served by contracted providers in fiscal '24 and in fiscal '25 to date?
'24, I thought, I believe I gave you those numbers. Five thousand, '24, 5,485. I don't have anything for, do I have for '25 here?
Just to date in '25, if you have it.
Yeah, I don't, I have for '23 and '22 and '24.
Okay, give me '22 and '23, if you don't mind.
Right. You want those numbers again? Okay.
Yes.
So for '23, it was 5,215, and for '22, it was 5,349. And those are unduplicated clients. So that's not number of services, that's just unduplicated clients.
Right, understood. Is there currently a waitlist for older adult kinship caregiving services?
No, there isn't a waitlist.
Okay.
Although, I should say this for the record, given that the state is distributing money based on waiting lists, we will have waiting lists from here on in.
How does DIFTA ensure older adults are aware of these kinship care support services? What outreach and education is there for this program?
Give me that question again, it was.
Yeah. How do you ensure older adults are aware of these kinship care support services? Are you doing any outreach or education on the program?
Any targeted outreach at this time? No, we are not. We are hoping to do a education and outreach program for caregivers, and that would include, you know, kinship care also.
Okay. And are any funds still included in DIFTA's budget for the GRC as of the fiscal 2026 preliminary plan?
Targeted for GRC, no. That has been absorbed into other program areas.
Okay. Can you clarify, then, which funding streams currently support kinship care resources?
Kinship care resources would be absorbed under our caregiving program. So it's everything, you know, whatever we have in our care, what's allocated. So it's everything, you know, whatever we have in our care, what's allocated for our caregiving program, that's where the money would be.
Okay. I'm gonna move into the legislation, if that's okay. Intro 1184 in relation to establishing a program to support older adults providing kinship care. Do you believe a centralized resource or office for older kinship caregivers, whether housed at NYC Aging or elsewhere, could improve service coordination and reduce confusion?
I don't believe there's confusion now. I don't have any evidence that there is confusion now. If, if we would have the opportunity to do targeted outreach, then that would, if we had the opportunity to do targeted outreach and education, and of course, we would always move in that direction. But the resources that we currently have are limited. And doing outreach, and we would need additional resources to match the need that will evolve.
Do you have anything to add, Deputy Commissioner?
Right, I think, so our preventive providers are community-based. And, you know, would work with any family, whether they're kinship caregiver or not. And they haven't come to us to say, you know, we have a specific increased need that we're struggling to meet for older adult kinship caregivers. And I think if they were, we would, they're pretty vocal. We would hear that as an additional need that's beyond what they're able to serve. So we haven't heard that feedback.
Okay, great. Does NYC Aging have an opinion about the location of a centralized resource or office for older kinship caregivers?
I would.
If we were to establish a centralized resource or office, do you care whether it's under NYC Aging or not?
Of course I would.
Well, I should say, not if you care, but do you have an opinion?
I would, I would say that if it's services to older adults, it should be housed in NYC Aging.
NYC Aging, okay. And then can you just talk about how such a program might complement or overlap with existing NYC Aging services?
I believe that it would just enrich what we currently have under our caregiving program.
Are there any operational challenges you foresee in launching the proposed kinship care program?
Other than money?
Other than money?
No, I think.
Get into the money in a minute.
I think, I think it's a budget conversation.
Okay.
Those conversations.
So no, no operational challenges, other than?
Right, no.
Okay. How can the proposed program best integrate with current kinship care supports? And are there elements from the former GRC that should be retained or modified?
I'm sure there are elements of everything that, that could be repurposed, rethought. It was hard to look at best practices in that model when we had such a low utilization. So you couldn't tell, you know, what's, what was a best practice, or what wasn't a best practice. But I'm sure that with that kind of extensive relook, we could probably find out if there are some things that should be enriched or enhanced.
What strategies would you recommend to improve outreach, particularly for non-English speakers and those with limited digital access, to ensure that the program's resources are accessible to all older caregivers?
I believe that a massive public education campaign is essential around caregiving because of the growing number of older adults and the growing number of caregivers. Educational and engagement campaign. That said, you cannot have that unless you have the complementary services that match that.
What are your recommendations regarding funding and resource allocation within intro 1184 to ensure that the program can be sustained without compromising other essential services?
I've not seen a budget for 1184, or, or expectation on magnitude and performance. Not having that, it's very difficult to opine. But I want for the record to say that there is no objection to it in theory or concept.
Okay, so have you not seen the fiscal impact statement? For the bill?
No, I have not.
Okay. Okay. So the, the council's. The council's fiscal impact statement differs greatly from the administration's fiscal impact statement. And so just to sort of summarize, we are proposing or thinking about this in the sense of the program officers or the positions that you had previously. And so our estimated cost for the partial fiscal year 2026, just based on when it would be implemented, would be 158,595 dollars. 158,595. And then in subsequent fiscal years, it would be 317,189 dollars. 317,189.
And that would be like for the full complement, are you, were you programming it at four or six?
I think we did it at three.
Okay.
Three, including fringe rates.
Include, three including?
Fringe rates, so just the, the full salary. Okay, now, what the administration has presented us with is a program that would have contracted services at a cost of 4.92 million dollars.
Not knowing the details, I can't respond to that. But it may include the additional services that would require, if you have a kinship care program. Respite, transportation, and some of those. I cannot opine.
But were those services provided previously in the GRC?
In the GRC? I don't recall. But they are part of a caregiving program. And if this is part of a caregiving plan, those would be included in that. I don't, I, I'd rather not opine because I haven't seen this document. And I don't know what's included in it. I know that something was given to you yesterday, but I, I have not seen that.
Okay. Is it safe to assume then that, that you or your agency were not included in coming up with these numbers?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we were not included. I would say that, you know, I'm sure it was done, you know, last night or whenever it was done. But I'm, I'm confident that we would have been included.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna go to you, Deputy Commissioner, for a few, a few questions. So older adults in foster care, does, does your agency track older adult kinship caregivers?
Yes, that's the number.
The 620, right?
620 out of 2082.
Okay, great. And can you describe the challenges that older adult kinship caregivers face in the foster system?
Yeah, so I think a lot of the challenges would be faced by, you know, regardless of age, although obviously some things are more challenging. But many of the children who, and youth who are in foster care, by their very nature of being in foster care, have experienced trauma. And so, which is why we've done a lot of work and created a new training program specifically focused on working with children with trauma. Also about half, roughly, I'd have to get you the exact number, but close to half of the young people in foster care are teenagers and up to 21. And so, for reasons that, you know, teenagers are often challenging. And so I, I think a lot of the challenges are really just the challenges people face raising children, and particularly young people in foster care. The one thing I'll add that I think is important is that oftentimes, children in foster care have more appointments than, than the typical child because a really important part of being in foster care is connecting with parents, their parents. And so they'll have visits or sibling visits. When kids are in kinship care, oftentimes, the kinship parent will be able to arrange those visits because it could be more of like at their home with, as a family, versus at a foster care agency if it doesn't need to be supervised. But there are additional, you know, appointments for young people in foster care.
Okay, and do you know how often NYC Children makes referrals for older adults kinship caregivers? And what they are?
I'd have to double check, but I don't think we're specifically tracking those types of referrals.
Okay. Do you know of any effect that the closure of the Grandparent Resource Center had on your agency?
I've not heard of any. And our, on the prevention side, I know we have vacancies all throughout the city for families who need services.
And have you seen an uptick in requests for kinship care assistance since the GRC was disbanded? I know you don't track.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
How does NYC Children coordinate with NYC Aging or other agencies to ensure older adult kinship caregivers receive the specialized assistance they may need, such as legal guidance or respite services? And I know you mentioned the training earlier.
Yeah, we really want to make sure New Yorkers are aware of how to access services and supports for children without needing to call the SCR. So we have found historically that many, many people who work with children are mandated reporters. And sort of this belief that the best way you can access services quickly was to make a report to the SCR, which then triggers ACS to conduct an investigation. And less than, than a third to a quarter of cases that we investigate, we find abuse or neglect. And children of color are overrepresented. So we've been working with many city agencies, including Aging, to help mandated reporters better understand how to access services without calling in a report if children are not in danger. There are many children and families who need services and support, but the child doesn't need an investigation because there's not a safety risk. And so we've been doing a lot of work to get our support line out, which you can access through our website on the For Family section, or it's 212-676-7667. But Aging has been one of the agencies we are working with to make sure those working with older adults know how to access the services and supports without a report.
Okay, great, thank you. Bless you. Did NYC Children absorb any staff expertise or program elements from the GRC?
Not that I'm aware of.
Are NYC Children caseworkers or frontline staff provided any specialized training to address the unique challenges faced by older adult kinship caregivers, such as navigating fixed incomes or health concerns?
I'd have to double check on whether it's focused on older adults in the way you're asking the question. But they, but our staff are trained on how to access various supports. And so, for example, there are some cases where kids live with relatives but aren't in foster care. And our team, for example, in that instance, is trained on how to connect families to HRA for services such as like tanif and food stamps. But I'm not sure if it's as focused in the way you're asking the question.
Okay, that's fair. How does NYC Children ensure older adult caregivers understand their legal options? For example, guardianship versus custody versus adoption, and receive timely legal assistance?
When children are in foster care and they're not going to return home, so either they're going to be adopted or kin gap, there is, we're able to provide the relative foster parent or person seeking guardianship adoption through the family court with a lawyer, with the, not with the lawyer, but with the funding for the lawyer. They get, you know, a private lawyer, but we are able to pay for that. For those who are outside of our system, our, on the prevention side, preventive providers have connections and can make referrals to legal assistance. That's part of what they're supposed to do. But we wouldn't, ACS wouldn't be directly involved with a relative caregiver seeking custody or guardianship privately outside of the child welfare system.
Understood. And then, a couple of questions related to the bill specifically. Does NYC Children see value in a formal kinship care program for older adults proposed in intro 1184?
We, I would say we always think that having supports for families and caregivers and the children is beneficial. There's also a benefit to these types of supports not being inside ACS because for obvious reasons, people are afraid to come to ACS. And so, you know, the more supports there are for families in New York City, the better.
Okay, great. And how might such a program complement or overlap with existing NYC Children services?
I mean, I think we'd want to make sure that, as an example, this new program knew how to access the services and supports we already have on the preventive side. You know, we wouldn't want people to duplicate those services. We also have family enrichment centers. Where, we're grown from four of those to there'll be 30 soon. They're opening up, there are about 15 now open, where people can drop in and they're built for the needs of that community. And so some of those family enrichment centers do actually have grandparent caregiving programs that that community wanted. And so we would also want this program to be aware of how to access them, where the family enrichment centers are too.
Great. And you said this a moment ago, but I just want to confirm for the record that you think a program like this would be best suited outside of your agency?
I do, for a variety of reasons, including that most children in New York City are actually not involved with ACS. And so to have the, you know, more breadth, I think, outside ACS, of course, you know, if this program were with ACS, we do have like the family enrichment centers programs that aren't for families with investigations. So, you know, we'd of course do the best we could to make it feel as, make it both feel and be as safe as possible.
Yeah. It's a, it's not a trick question, it's okay if you don't want it, I just want to confirm. But I appreciate your answers. That concludes my questions for both of you. Thank you so much for your time and both of you for being here.
And thank you, and please excuse my interruption there.
It's all good, all good, no worries. Alrighty, I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's oversight topic of older adult kinship caregiving resources, or on introduction number 1184. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony.
Not only does becoming an informal caregiver come with increased responsibilities, it can also dramatically change the relationship dynamic between the care provider and recipient. These changes may require them to fulfill roles that are uncomfortable and create conflict and stress that exacerbate existing abusive dynamics or create a new fault lines for a breakdown in the relationship. In DIPDA's 2017 survey of informal caregivers, over half of the respondents reported that they were providing at least 30 hours of care per week, and many articulated the pressure of being primarily responsible for another's care and the negative effects of the reorientation of their social and professional lives. If not properly supported and addressed, these new relationship dynamics can lead to resentment and frustration that risks finding an outlet in physical and psychological abusive behavior. The Weinberg Center for Elder Justice supports the Chair's proposal to create new kinship caregiving resources for older adults and to facilitate broader awareness of available resources for informal older adult caregivers, their written materials and informational sessions at older adult centers, and believes such actions are a vital tool in the prevention of elder abuse for both providers and recipients of informal caregiving relationships. Thank you.
Look at you, spot on. You rehearsed that, didn't you? A little bit. Well, thank you, and we've got your, the full written testimony, so appreciate you being here. Next.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson and members of the Aging Committee. My name is Brian Ellicott Cook. My pronouns are they and he, and I serve as the Director of Government Relations at SAGE, the nation's largest and oldest organization dedicated to improving the lives of LGBTQ+ older adults. Since our founding in 1978, SAGE has worked tirelessly to advocate for policies and programs that empower LGBTQ+ elders, ensuring that they can age with dignity, security, and support. From leading national advocacy efforts to providing direct services, we have remained at the forefront of combating social isolation, housing insecurity, and healthcare disparities among LGBTQ+ older adults. I'm here today to express SAGE's support for Intro 1184, which seeks to establish a program dedicated to supporting older adults providing kinship care. This initiative is critical in ensuring older adults who are caregivers have access to necessities, resources, guidance, and community support to navigate the challenges of kinship care. In 2021, the New York State enacted legislation defining kinship caregivers as non-parent relatives and family friends who are taking on caregiving responsibilities for children. These laws granted caregivers legal standing, enabling them to access vital benefits and services. Additionally, the state's Kinship Navigator Program provides essential resources, information, referrals, and assistance in kinship families, including those in New York City. While these programs are offer valuable support, a city-specific initiative such as the one proposed in Intro 1184 will ensure that kinship caregivers, particularly older adults, receive localized tailored assistance to meet their unique needs. This initiative is especially critical to LGBTQ+ older adults who are deeply engaged in caregiving roles. Research from AARP indicates that approximately 58% of LGBTQ+ adults age 45 and older have either provided or are previously provided caregivers for a loved one. Many LGBTQ+ caregivers take on kinship roles without the legal or financial protections afforded to traditional family members, and there's more.
No problem. We have the full written testimony, so we're good. I do have a couple of questions for you both, though. Are there best practices or successful models from other jurisdictions or organizations that you believe could be adapted here in New York City with regard specifically to this bill or program?
I would say that the Commissioner did bring up that the caregiving program that is established was sort of added to that. So, those models do work. They can be modeled the same way. I, off the top of my head, don't know of a jurisdiction that does it currently, but the caregiving program at Sage has been very successful.
Okay. And then, are there other services, supports, or modifications you would recommend including in the legislation to better serve older adult kinship caregivers and ensure that the program is responsive to their evolving needs? I don't know if there's anything in either of your longer testimonies that would address that? No?
Mine, mine does.
Okay.
I appreciate that question. I did air recognizing chosen family structures in my testimony, especially now, given the federal administration. I think it's important that this piece of legislation better define chosen family structures to make sure that that is protected, as well as continuing to provide LGBTQ+ inclusive service training. That remains to be crucial in sharing housing and legal protections and also directly supporting trans and non-binary caregivers now more than ever.
Okay, great. Thank you both so much. Appreciate you being here. I'd now like to call up Mahatira Jastine Tete and Sharon Brown.
We can start on this end and go down.
And just make sure you pull the microphone close to you and then press the button at the bottom. Make sure the red light is on.
Is it working?
Yes. Great.
Good afternoon. My name is Mahatira. I'm a staff member with the Elder Law Unit at the Legal Aid Society. The Elder Law Unit is a multidisciplinary team that specializes in eviction defense for seniors in Bronx and Brooklyn. The Legal Aid Society supports the proposed bill, which seeks to establish a program to support older adults who provide kinship care for their families. The Elder Law Unit represents older adults who provide kinship care for their grandchildren and other minor children in their households. We are aware that older New Yorkers make up a majority of all kinship caregivers in New York and face unique challenges due to their age, socioeconomic status, and additional barriers. Notably, many older caregivers raise their children on fixed incomes while they live at or below the federal poverty line, and many face housing and food insecurity. We are here today to provide three recommendations for the committee to consider. The first is, we recommend that this program is made available to as many kinship households as possible by ensuring that both formal and informal kinship arrangements are both supported. Formal kinship arrangements are those where the older adult has or is in the process of obtaining guardianship or custodial rights. Where informal kinship arrangements may lack those formal documents or legal rights are nonetheless crucial for many families where children still rely on the older adult for the majority of their care and needs. This barrier often creates distinct hardships for informal families in obtaining certain housing vouchers due to the lack of documentation or access to formal legal systems. Therefore, they would greatly benefit from the individualized case assistance to maximize their resources, rental subsidies, and other benefits. Second, we agree that the aid workshops would provide a great benefit for older caregivers, but we want to ensure that participation is not a requirement for receiving case assistance as many older adults may struggle to attend all workshops due to a variety of barriers. And lastly, we want to ensure that the program has sufficient wraparound services to encourage participation by older adults, and this can include...
Are you, are you almost finished?
Yeah, just one more sentence. To coordinate transportation as well as caregiving assistance while older adults are attending workshops or appointments. And these recommendations are just meant to ensure that the program meets older adults where they're at and would encourage more older adults to seek out these services.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson and esteemed members of the Committee on Aging. My name is Justine Tete, and I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy at Lenox Hill Neighborhood House, and I am testifying in favor of older adult kinship caregiving resources. Lenox Hill Neighborhood House is a 131-year-old settlement house that oversees NYC Aging funding programs, including a caregiver program to older adult centers and a social delta day program. Last fiscal year, we served 769 clients through our caregiver program and over 5,000 members across all of our older adult programs. NYC Aging has been a cornerstone for older adult support and celebration and has transformed advocacy, research, and public knowledge into what it means to age with dignity and empowerment. Our caregiver program delivers much-needed services to caregivers residing in congressional districts eight through 12, including supportive counseling for caregivers experiencing burnout and stress, virtual and in-person support groups, supplemental item purchases, respite services, and many more. The communities we serve are rich in culture and familial values. We have observed that kinship caregivers can be grandparents or other older family members that are caring for a child that they do not have legal custody of. As we continue to advocate for additional funding for our city's older adult programs, we must also recognize the importance of supporting older adults in kinship diets. Nontraditional family structures are embedded in our community, with older adults raising an adolescent family member or a family member with intellectual and/or developmental needs. Caregivers face immeasurable obstacles, including financial barriers, lack of social service support, legal challenges, and neglect of representation in local, state, and federal policies. The Neighborhood House hopes that the stories of other kinship caregivers inspire our local government to approve investments and new funding streams for kinship caregivers, as it would be vital to ensure that these types of overlooked individuals receive the services they need. We can only hope that with this momentum, organizations can continue to invest in NYC Aging's goal to build multi-generational program and resources for years to come. Thank you for being a voice for our community.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Before I start, remember Israel, defend Israel, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go. Okay, the kinship program, I believe that there should be a care program. Now, the program is for aged adults who are helping young people. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. So, the aged adults are going to need things to help them aid and assist the children that they're caring for. They themselves probably have difficulties and things like that, and we need to make all the resources available to them as we make it available to the person that they're caring for. So, they would be related to them, so it could be some kind of familial resources that we have for them. For instance, housing that would be adequate for both the older person and the young child. Most of them have physical disabilities or needs, things that need to be met, and they need finances, and they shouldn't just feel like this is some kind of program type of thing where, poor you. We should have things for them to learn things, learn to ride horses, all kinds of things, all kind of resources to let them know that you're, this is not a punishment, that you are not with your parents or something like that. We should have financing to, for them to learn computers, to learn, like to let them know this is the beginning of their life. When they get into these kind of programs, it's not that, poor, woe is me. It is that we are setting you up for success. So, this should be a catalyst for them. It shouldn't be, poor you, we expect you to fail in about 20 years. What we do in these programs should excel anything that we've ever had before.
Thank you. Hold on one second. I have a couple of questions for the first two testimonies. In your experience, what outreach methods work best to reach older caregivers, especially those who may have limited digital skills or face language barriers?
So, some of the resources that might be helpful for them is having pamphlets in different languages, making these documents available in places that they have access to. So, older adult centers, placing them in certain agencies they go to, so having them available at HRA or Housing Court or other places where they might be able to seek services or may have to go to access services. That is like initial thought.
Thank you. Anything to add, or?
Yeah. Our organization has an adult education program where we also do teach tech ed for any older adult who is trying to navigate technology. And so, in addition to helping older adults navigate technology, we also do have pamphlets and information available in various languages.
And then, can you identify any particular cultural or linguistic gap in the current availability of kinship care resources for older adults? Or it doesn't have to be specifically related to kinship care, but just in general, any cultural or linguistic gaps that you've seen with clients that you serve? No?
I'd say that there may be a cultural gap in their understanding of whether or not they have access to these resources. I don't have specific examples, but from what I've seen from certain clients, they might not feel that they fit into the definition of kinship if they're not in a formal arrangement or they don't have formal guardianship. That might prevent them from accessing these resources.
Okay.
So, it would be really beneficial that any material emphasizes that they should be able to access these services too.
Okay, great. That's helpful. And then, the last question is, have you encountered barriers or have clients that you've served encountered barriers that you're aware of when seeking legal assistance or navigating custody and guardianship processes? I know for you specifically, Legal Aid.
I can certainly look into that for you. I'm with the Housing Department and less so with the Department that does that service. But I can add that to your testimony.
Okay. Great. Thank you also very much. Appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify? Okay, we're going to move to virtual testimony, and I'm going to call on Carol Cox.
Am I muted? Can you hear me?
You're unmuted, and as soon as the sergeants tell you to go, we will begin your time.
Thank you.
You may begin.
Thank you. I'm Carol Cox. I am a professor of social work at Fordham University Graduate School of Social Service. I began working with the Grandparent Resource Center in the city of New York in 1998, when I had the good fortune to have wonderful supports, and I developed what we call and continues, the Grandparent Empowerment Program. Actually, I should put on my video. Sorry about that. So, in fact, there is a book on the program that came out, along with many, many papers. The program has won several awards over the lifetime that I've given it. It's won, and it was recognized in 2010 by the Administration of the Association Area Agencies on Aging. The program was offered by the GRC until 2023, which is a long time, on and off, not continually. There was a break, and then it came back again. Originally, it's an empowerment program, and by looking at empowerment, it is saying that grandparents are already resourceful. They have taken on the role of raising grandchildren, and as you've heard many times, they often have many issues, many, many challenges that they've never expected. They take this role, and then they become really paralyzed. They don't know what to do. How do you deal with children's loss? How do you deal with children's grief? How do you communicate with kids? How do you communicate with a teenager, which we know is very difficult? The Empowerment Program is not a support group. It is actually a teaching group, an empowerment group, and every participant in the program receives a whole curriculum of seven or classes, 14 classes originally, then we brought it down to seven. I was very taken by one of the questions you just asked about whether people who had very low literacy could do this. Yes, I have even had grandparents in the program over the years who were illiterate. But we do so much in terms of talking and going through the skills and what they have to do and having them work with children to develop these skills. One woman said to me, she was from Puerto Rico, and she was illiterate in English, barely, you know, had very little...
Your time's expired.
Ah, sorry.
That's okay. Can you just share the name of the book again that you referenced?
Yes. This is Empowering Grandchildren, Empowering Grandparents. Can you see it?
Could you hold it back a little bit from your camera?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Empowering Grandparents Raising Grand...
Okay, great.
That was the initial...
Thank you.
Originally, it's an empowerment program, and by looking at empowerment, it is saying that grandparents are already resourceful. They have taken on the role of raising grandchildren. And as you've heard many times, they often have many issues, many, many challenges that they'd never expected. They take this role, and then they become really paralyzed. They don't know what to do. How do you deal with children's loss? How do you deal with children's grief? How do you communicate with kids? How do you communicate with a teenager, which we know is very difficult? The Empowerment Program is not a support group. It is actually a teaching group, an empowerment group. And every participant in the program receives a whole curriculum of seven classes, 14 classes originally, then we brought it down to seven. I was very taken by one of the questions you just asked about whether people who had very low literacy could do this. Yes, I have even had grandparents in the program over the years who were illiterate. But we do so much in terms of talking and going through the skills and what they have to do, and having them work with children to develop these skills. One woman said to me, she was from Puerto Rico, and she was illiterate in English, barely, you know, had very little...
Your time's expired.
Sorry.
That's okay. Can you just share the name of the book again that you referenced?
Yes, this is Empowering Grandchildren, Empowering Grandparents. Can you see it?
Could you hold it back a little bit from your camera?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Empowering Grandparents Raising Grand... That was the initial book, but we've done many, many articles on it. And I just wanted to say that during COVID, the program was taken online and was offered virtually to probably almost, I think, over 100 grandparents in the City of New York, five boroughs. And a virtual program, when we talk about, and this I've written about and talked about so much.
Thank you.
When we say that people can, older people, and particularly older minority people, cannot operate technology, it's absolutely nonsense. They loved it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Of course.
Thank you. Is there a Gordon Lee present, virtually? Gordon Lee.
You may begin.
Lawrence Campbell. Is there a Lawrence Campbell present?
You may begin, Lawrence.
Okay, seeing no hands, we will conclude testimony, public testimony for today. I'd like to thank everybody for their testimony as well as those from the administration for providing their testimony. And this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.